Okay, hello everyone, welcome to the Amherst Planning Board newly named Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. It is September 11th, it is 11:38. We will start with attendance of the members. Please indicate if you're here when I call your name. Fred Harwell.
Fred is here.
Angus MacLeod.
Present.
Is that the correct pronunciation of your last name?
Yeah.
I know Bruce Colton is not joining us today, and I Jesse Major am present. Okay, so, oh, Jera's in the audience, great, Jera, hang on, I'll bring you over in a minute. If you like, any announcements, I don't have any made driven announcements for us.
I don't know.
Okay. I had suggested we try and look at four sets of minutes today that I emailed around. I think Angus, you were not there, so probably you can't vote on those, Fred, I don't know if you've had a chance to look them over.
Yeah, I had a computer problem and I only just barely got them downloaded, I haven't had a chance to look at them.
No worries, we'll shift that assignment to next week, because also I'm not sure we could even how does that work Nate, if there's only three of us here, there's four members, but only two of us can vote. Will that still be majority enough to vote?
Yeah, I would say that's fine, there's different opinions about how to approve minutes, some just assume when they're done, they're done.
Okay.
You don't, you don't even need a formal vote, so.
Interesting, can we adopt that strategy, not actually formally vote?
You know, it's, the former chair of the Housing Trust is like, I went to a workshop for boards and committees about open meeting law, and this is a number years ago, and the presenter said, when they're done, you can just present them to the board, say they're public and they're done, and that's it, but most of boards and committees I've ever been on review them and vote them, so like I said, I made a note to myself, I, we could post them as draft, just because I know people might be looking, and then we can always modify them after, so.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back to that next week. Unless there's objection from the other members, I will bring Jera over to join our panel, and we'll continue to use in raising features, since that's largely how we've run the subcommittee in the past. I don't see any objections, so Jera, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist. Great. Hello.
Everyone.
Thanks for joining. Okay, so first on the agenda was continuing North Amherst overlay, and maybe I mean Nate and I just discussed maybe taking a slightly different approach than we have been, rather than trying to continue to hash out a lot of the details. We were talking about maybe spending a little time on it, but really waiting for this meeting to happen with North Amherst, basically getting a lot of feedback before we spend too much detailed effort, so that we end up with a product that obviously ready for the planning board, but then also could go to council that has already sort of, or CRC that has already been in a lot of people's minds to increase the chance of something actually moving forward. So with that in mind, Nate, are there pieces you'd like us to work on today?
I can share the framework document and the map, I may, I think, you know, I think that the planning board, we talked about what format of the, of the public meeting, and we could talk a little bit about that, I mean, I think some of it is, you know, like, right, I've heard that there's a lot of concerns about this, and what is the right amount of density? You know, there's already a large gatherings up there, you know, is this creating a public safety hazard, you know, I know the sewer infrastructure would need to be upgraded. I'm not saying this to discourage anyone, I think, you know, they're just considerations, I think this is actually still a nice area. Even if the property owners aren't immediately going to use it, it could be that it attracts another outside developer or interest, and then they partner with the owner. And so I think, yeah, I think we could just go through and see like, are there some, you know, some bigger questions around how we envision this, and so, you know, for instance, Bruce was like, oh, I think I like the idea of, at the planning board, what if there is a yoga studio, right, or some, some amenities for the residents, you know, is that a mixed-use building, or can we write it into the overlay that that's still just an accessory use to the apartments, and I think we could. In that way, we kind of narrow the definition of residential uses to say just apartment buildings, and we don't allow social dormitories or mixed-use buildings, and social dormitories are really exclusively for students, according to the zoning bylaw, and so in an overlay, we have the ability to kind of redefine, we could, we could come up with a new definition or something, or we could use what's existing. I, I think, you know, some of it would be just right then kind of boiling down what we think is really important to get here. You know, if we like creative and flexible site plan, you know, we can write in, I have this idea of a pre-application meeting with staff, and we could have criteria for that, and say it has to be more than a concept plan, we'd like to see, you know, three ideas, and it should include, you know, whatever, building footprints, road layouts, parking, and a few things, and, you know, then it's really handled administratively to say, here's what we think is a good site plan to then be reviewed by the board as a site plan review use, which is why, you know, we'd want to do this as site plan review, or, you know, otherwise it's just a, a building permit, but have some public review, it's really hard to deny, so as a site planner view, we can have criteria in the bylaw, but unless it's like really egregious, and they just, you know, my guess is that a developer could come in and have a site plan that everyone really likes, and it meets the bylaw, and someone could come in with a site plan that no one really likes, but it meets the bylaw, and it's hard to say change the, your building layout completely, unless we have like really strict standards in there, you know, whether it's like distance between buildings or architectural style that's so prescriptive that it's hard to deviate from, and so I'm not sure that's the route we want to go either.
So what are, are there levers that you can deny things without it being explicitly made out in the bylaw? So is that, would like, you require a special permit for everything?
Yeah, so a special permit's easier because it's discretionary to begin with, and you actually, you know, you could deny it necessarily, you don't, the state doesn't, you know, depending on the product, you don't even have to give a reason, the board could just deny it. You know, typically, most communities provide findings or reasons, so it's, you know, it's a little more legally substantial, but you don't have to.
Then the flip side of this whole thing, right, is to try and avoid special permit to make it more attractive for the developers.
Right, and so most of these properties, you know, when they were developed, when they were developed, it was a special permit, back say in the 60s or 70s. Sometimes it might have been even a site planner view, but anyways, since then, the town changed the zoning, because there was a lot of apartment complexes happening with the growth, growth of UMass, and just, you know, because there are more multi-unit properties developed around town, and so now all these properties are dimensionally non-conforming, and, and use non-conforming, so essentially they can't, couldn't be developed today, because they're just not allowed. And so as a pre-existing non-conforming use, they could expand or alter through a special permit. You know, and like, there's one university drive south, and Aspen Heights, behind Domino's on Route 9 did, did that. And there has to be some findings, but it's a little tricky, and most developers won't even approach a property knowing it's a special permit, and so we've had a few inquiries, you know, in the years, whether it's for properties in North Amherst or elsewhere, and then they, we say, oh, it's a special permit, but we'll work with you to, you know, with the zoning board, and they, they'll, they'll not even consider it.
This occurred to me, I'd love your professional opinion on, so what if we, what if, let's imagine we change some of the language in the actual overlay, and something like you said, like, oh, four stories allowed everywhere with these other requirements, and we advertise it, but we also somehow make it known, we invite special permits to increase density. Like, what kind of reaction do you think that gets from developers, does that make it more friendly, or are they still like, oh, wow, special permit, I don't want to deal with that? You know what I mean, so then
Yeah, 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 yeah.
overlay is maybe a little more palatable for people who are opposed, because it's not saying we want six stories, it's saying here, but then we're leaving the door open and a way to deny.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's kind of like what, you know, Archipelago or, you know, is, is doing down in South Amherst, they're asking for a special permit for the additional height for the floor, and, you know, both for the additional floor and for the height of the building. I don't, yeah, it could, we could work, we could do it that way, and we might find that it doesn't get used, and then we want to adjust it, you know, or we could say, you know, you can get an additional floor if, if you provide more, a higher percentage of affordable units, or you do something, you know, we have kind of like a trade-off. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I, I don't know, I'm, I'll share my screen in a minute, I think the, yeah, I, there's different ways to approach it, you know.
Maybe we need to see some feedback, and then that'll help guide
Yeah.
how to approach it, I don't mean from, I mean, like, at this meeting, or with other discussions.
And, you know, and the question is if this really is geared towards, towards students, would we, would we change the overlay and say that this is a student housing overlay and kind of frame it differently, and we, we're not doing that right now, we're saying it's a kind of a redevelopment overlay, and it could be, you know, that it's just market rate units with, there's a percentage of affordable, given our inclusion rate zoning, so that, you know, 12% of the units would be affordable, and, you know, and the reason for that is if we think that there's a lot of units generated here, why would we miss it on the opportunity to get, you know, 200 extra affordable units? And so, the difference being if it's student housing, depending on how we classify it, you know, it may or may not count toward our year-round number of housing units, so it doesn't affect our SHI number, which is or isn't a concern, you know, to me, where, but it's, you know, it is interesting kind of that approach, right, so right now, we're saying this is an overlay just for infill development, a developer could come in and, you know, you know, they, not that they could do age restricted, but they could, right, if someone's like, I want to have a mix of tenants on my property, and I'm going to do different things, they could. And if we said it's a student housing overlay, and that's what, only what we allow, then it's only students that would live there. It's just a different approach.
Yeah. Sure.
So I'll share my screen. What are people seeing right now, is, they're saying the, a word document with
Yeah, yeah, your general framing framework. Um, well, this, you imagine this is going to get filled out a bit more before it goes anywhere, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of it is like the purpose, right, so, you're kind of, it's just like, these are just bullet points.
Right.
You know, it's like, is it, you know, you know, but is it just student rental housing, or is it denser housing, you know, is it more, is it the idea of just more units?
Yeah.
You know, and types of residential uses, I mean, so, to me, it's like, okay, we fill out this document, and then we start, what it becomes is then, uh, you know, we already have kind of this draft zoning amendment, where we start maybe adding definitions and dimensional standards and things, but this is kind of just, you know, let's walk through this, you know, what.
Sure. All right, let's, let's start with the purpose, I mean, honestly, I think Bruce agrees with me on this point, which is, I do think the main purpose is student rental housing, and the justification is because of location and proximity, and how few places there are where we can limit cars and still get students to live there. And again, every time, every chance we get, I think we should build in to alleviate pressure from single-family neighborhoods and the housing demands, so anyway, I'd love to see that text get in there too. How others feel about really focusing on student housing.
Yeah, I mean, I, wait. Okay.
Good, you're good, go ahead.
Okay, okay, um, so I, I, I would agree with that, I think, one of the things that I, that might be worth saying, if we're, if we're talking, I mean, this is the framework for this specific overlay, is to say that we're focusing on, on increasing density of already existing, you know, student, mostly primarily student housing. So, you know, I, I think we want to stress that we're not talking about creating new student housing and transforming neighborhoods, right, we're talking about leaning into an area that's already doing this work.
That's a really good point.
And again, with, with the hope, as you, as you noted Jesse, and as Bruce said, of alleviating pressures in neighborhoods that are not designed to house lots of students.
Yeah. Yeah, so, sorry, Joe, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, so I I, I apologize, like, the, I'm, I'm probably, you know, behind the eight ball on this, but could I get like a very quick synopsis about like the, where this idea came from, because I'm curious, you know, the over, an overlay is one strategy to achieve what we're hoping to get out of this, but there's also other ways that I feel we could potentially increase the amount of student housing in that particular area and reap all the benefits that we're talking about, so yeah, could I just get like a quick summary of like, where did we decide that an overlay was the best strategy to, to approach this, and have there been any other discussions about any other ways to look at these, these properties for redevelopment?
Sure, I, I can jump in, Jesse, yeah, I mean, it was, it's, you know, like 10 years ago or more, we had a comprehensive housing market study, and one of the suggestions was, you know, look at areas where you could have increased density, and then, you know, have other areas where you maybe protect neighborhoods or, you know, with different zoning strategies, and so you know, like I was saying, most of these apartment areas in town, multi-unit developments throughout town are now non-conforming, and so staff had identified, well, these are large areas that already have infrastructure, you know, some are closer to the university or downtown and village centers, so the idea was like, create an overlay. But I think at that time, the overlay was for every multi-unit property in town, you know, so it covered, you know, you know, it was like anywhere in East Amherst, South Amherst, basically any multi-unit property would be in this overlay, and it, I think it was just too big and overwhelming, and it was really hard to then tailor specific, whether it's conditions or requirements, and it didn't really go anywhere. You know, and I think, when we brought this back up, I think, you know, we've had success with overlays, because it doesn't change the base zoning, and given that these are non-conformities, you know, they could use a special permit now to change, but we're thinking of what is some other way without changing the base zoning. But, you know, we haven't explored necessarily other options, and so if you have ideas, I think that's, you know, I think it'd be worth hearing, to, to say, okay, is there some other strategy, you know, whether it's a different development method we add in, you know, the overlay's nice because it doesn't affect the base zoning, so whatever happens here, it's not like, oh, now in the RO or whatever is owing district, we now allow you know, new development method that goes everywhere in town, but maybe that's not the bad, maybe that wouldn't be a bad thing.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, I'd be curious to hear what you have in mind.
Okay.
Brad.
Go ahead, Jesse.
Just add a couple of points. Granted, it's only, I've only been involved for two years, but right when I started was when this whole thing, I think, kicked back up into action, and we had a few meetings where we really looked at the big town map and identified a few areas that focus on, the first one was University Drive, and then, just recently, we decided North Amherst should be next, but this, those aren't the only ones.
Right.
And the other thing to note, and Nate, you know more details than I do, there was a proposal to change the base zoning in this, well, the motivations and directions were a little, still a little unclear to me, but it had a very difficult time, and a lot of back and forth, and eventually did not make it through council, that's not to say something else wouldn't, but I think, at least my sense of reading the room was, that's also why we leaned into the overlay idea.
Yeah, okay.
Smaller, more digestible packet.
That totally makes sense, and I think the overlay strategy does make a lot of sense, like, I don't want to, I, I, I don't want to come off as critical by any means, I'm just trying to get the full, the full picture. And Nate and Jesse, your points are, are very well taken. I the, I guess, one of the reasons that I ask is because an overlay in one, like, one of its advantages is that it's probably one of the more simple methods of incentivizing redevelopment in this area. But I think that this is, you know, I, I can't remember exactly how many acres this is, but it's a pretty huge area, and, you know, there's various models for like joint development or partnerships that would give the town maybe a little bit more, frankly, a little bit more control over what actually happens there. You know, I I, I love to sing the praises of Village Hill in North Hampton. Not to say that this area could necessarily follow that model, but, you know, and they don't have 9,000 units or whatever, could potentially fit in this particular space, but you know, they're able to have like 35% of all the rentals there are below market, you know, the, they have a wide-ranging age and racial and economic diversity in the community, but it wasn't like an overlay that produced it, it was either a PUD or a master plan, I can't exactly remember. But it was done with partnerships through the community developers with mass development, I think mass housing was a part of it, the state was a part of it, so it was all a very big and complicated effort, but I think that it resulted in some, a pretty amazing neighborhood, and so I wonder if there are other avenues for us to, to discuss, like, how to, what level of control do we want to, you know, so I guess, to try, to try and summarize this, an overlay is like the, I think, the, the easiest lift and could still very well get us what we're hoping to achieve out of this area, but it also puts the most power in the hands of the private market and the whims of the developers. Whereas there's other strategies that we could potentially advocate for, or help to organize, and I'd be happy to put together like a memo with some other ideas. But, uh, uh, I think that, you know, there's other methods that might give the town a little bit more influence over what we want to see in the future redevelopment of these particular parcels. So I'll, I'll stop there and would love to hear what Fred has to say, or anyone else.
Yeah, thanks, Fred, go ahead, I have some thoughts too, you go first.
Um, yeah. The development that he's talking about, I think, is a, an area that was originally a, it was a, a, a single property under state control.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, I'm having trouble making any correlation between that drawing board and what we're looking at anywhere in Amherst. So I you know, I I, I, I agree with the comments about the positive results that came from what happened in North Hampton. But I also think it's a non-starter in Amherst, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the development in North Hampton ultimately depended on the, on the history of that particular pos property being, and starting out in public ownership.
Yeah, totally hear you.
Yeah, no, I, I think actually, Joe, I think that was actually a 4DR, so it's a smart growth overlay.
Oh, okay.
And then, you know, what they were able to do is within that carve-out districts that had different kind of housing types and, say, demographic priorities. And so, you know, they, it was, I think it was, yeah, it was a really nice project. To me, the ownership piece, you know, that was one property or not, I think the fact that they, what they did is they used, you know, they took advantage of, right, was the state-run hospital, and it's a, you know, I don't know, it's 126 acres, whatever it was, I was just online, I mean, it's a yeah, a big property that they've been, but they did put this overlay on it, because I think the, the, the underlying zoning was, um, it was probably some institutional use that didn't do anything, right, and so
Yeah, right.
I mean, it could have been a base zone, essentially, they called it, I think I saw, there was, I've always known it as a 4DR, they also call it like a smart growth district, but I think it incorporates a 4DR, so it might be that they had a base zone of a smart growth district, and then they layered a 4DR on top of it. So, yeah, and to me, I guess, I guess, back to like the purpose, so if we're looking at, say, just student housing, then that's one thing, if we're thinking about, let's create a mix of housing types, meaning different income levels, then that's something different, and so I think that's to me where this kind of framework is important to say, okay, let's get down to what we think is the is the purpose, because it, it, to me, it differentiates, you know, right between how you get there, right, like, if you want different housing types, or is it just okay to have kind of high density for just students with something else, yeah.
Right, okay.
Angus, I may add two points, and then your next, I, I completely love the idea of making it more intentional, I guess, is the way I think about what you said. And I know, at least Bruce and I have chatted about similar ideas for the other possibly next pockets. Amherst, Gateway. Maybe even Atkins area, stuff like that. This has come up several times in the Northover, North Amherst idea is the uniqueness of this these particular parcels.
Yeah.
For reasons, and the one of which is important that hasn't been mentioned yet, I think, is the fact that very little is seen or experienced from the street.
Yeah.
Potential for it to really not feel any much different, assuming we solve the traffic, blah, blah, blah issues. But it, it feels like an opportunity to not have to do that heavy lifting. Probably achieve the result that's desired. So, just some more.
That makes a lot of sense.
Angus, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna add a couple of thoughts, I mean, one, yeah, I, I think Nate's point about the Village Hill plan targeting lots of different types of, of housing is, to me, not, not ideal for this particular site. Except, the one thing that I was thinking, obviously, we want to try, it would be great to increase density to house students. I think also university workers is another group that really has issues with housing, and so, and, and this proximity would be really nice for some of them. I don't know how much, I don't know if we have any data on who the types of people who are living in these current overlay apartment blocks, I presume they're mostly students. But I also would guess that there's some people who aren't. And I, I'm curious if y'all have any data on that, or if there would be a way to get any information about who's living in them, because that might help us as we think about how we're trying, who we're trying to house in this space, if there's anyone outside of students.
So anecdotally, I could add a couple of points, those from knowing friends of my kids basically who've lived there, and grad students in my lab have lived there. The sense I have is it's probably 90, 95% students. A mix of undergrads and grads, because there is some more friendly grad sort of family setup that's doable, then there are a few what sounds to me like mostly older individuals who still live there. I don't know if they're university affiliated, affiliated or not. But I, I've completely, I'm aligned with what you're saying about both staff and faculty needing options in town. That, again, that's what's driving my whole idea of getting on the board is to increase long-term residents who work here and live here, et cetera, et cetera. To be totally frank, I'm not opposed to living near and with students, but I don't know that that becomes attractive if it is 70% undergrad place for people who do want to be close to university to live, and then there's also the, the price issue, right? Meaning it's, I think it's always going to be cheaper to go to surrounding towns, which could be five or 10 minutes away to live there, I don't like that fact, but I think that is the fact, Nate, you might have better sense than I do about that issue. Um, yeah, so that's what I would add to that piece, Fred, you want to go ahead?
I just want to point out that students includes graduate students who are there's, there's a lot of them who are married with families, and the this you know, coming, if this were to come online with the, the boost in affordable housing. Now, when you think of students, you, you can't just think of undergraduates. And so this could be effective in that way as well.
Yeah, Jared, go ahead.
This is all great, I, I, I really appreciate all of your points, and, and I, I think it makes, you know, I appreciate the like, you know, uniform understanding that like, this is a really great opportunity, particularly for student housing, for all the reasons and more that have been stated. And the, like, you know, hesitation around what kind of housing type do we want this to be targeted for, and maybe there's other parts of, of Amherst that might be better for a, like, Village Hill-esque model. I I do, but I, I, unfortunately, I do have to go in a minute, but I do wonder if, it's just, like, would, would you be, all be all right if I just put together a quick memo of some, like, other potential strategies that could apply to this property, but memo of some like other potential strategies that could apply to this property, but potentially other ones as well, because I just, you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of organizations with resources and interest in housing. Uh, and I think that we can leverage partnerships in a way that would be beneficial to Amherst.
I think that'd be amazing if you did that. We could put it on the agenda for one of our upcoming meetings, just to go through the ideas.
Great, okay.
Just leave it.
Okay, awesome. Well, um, again, I just want to say like, I didn't want any of this to be critical. Like, I think, I still think an overlay is a great idea. I think.
It can be critical too.
Well, yeah, that's, I suppose. Um, but I just wanted to get a little bit more background on all this because, um, yeah, just wanted to, wanted to get all that. But so, uh, I guess I should probably go. Yeah, I need to go. All right.
Okay.
Um, thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, um, should we jump back to the framework? I'm just looking at time because we want to have time for some other topics too. Angus, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I'll, I'll wait for them for later.
Okay. Um, okay, types of residential uses, uh, I guess we should try and make some decisions, right? About what we want to include or not include. You know, again, I've said a few times, I, I always pull back on more flexibility, meaning more types allowed here. Uh, to encourage someone else's ideas, since we're not really trying to define a whole lot. I don't know how, how you two feel, or what we think will be most attractive, to, to actually encourage development.
Yeah, I was just gonna just jump in quickly and say that, you know, right now, if we, you know, apartments, mixed-use, um, buildings and dormitory, social dormitories are used classifications in our bylaw. And they have a set of, you know, some have standards and conditions they have to meet. So if we set a mixed-use building now, we didn't change it for the overlay, that would mean thirty percent of the first floor has to be a non-residential space. And so, you know, maybe, you know, if someone, if this were being built out, maybe someone would put something along North Pleasant Street as a mixed-use building. But I have a feeling that it wouldn't get used. Or it would, and maybe a lot of it would say vacant. I, you know, I don't know. I just, you know, so if, anyways, if we thought we were going to use in an apartments, we limited to twenty units of building. So even if we like the idea of apartments or mixed-use buildings, we may actually have to um, have a new definition that's applicable to just the overlay or a new set of standards and conditions to allow, allow, um, you know, different kind of development to happen.
So can we, how does, how, does actually a new name, or can it be like, in this overlay, mixed-use buildings have these other standards?
Yep, yep. And this overlay mixed-use building has, right, these other standards are, yep.
Or could it be apartments in this overlay can have between zero and thirty percent commercial use, or something like that?
Yep, yep.
So I, yeah, I mean, I think that phrasing to me makes a lot of sense to allow for the, you know, small bits that a developer thinks would be used, because then it'll actually be used, right? Versus a bigger percentage like you were suggesting. And yeah, I maybe social dormitories is not the right phrasing, but I, I think I brought this up initially, as potentially including here, but some type, allowing some type of more traditional dormitory style housing, rather than only full apartment units. Because maybe someone wants to build that, and maybe the economics of building that are more attractive. I don't know how we define that.
Yeah.
You know, if you need to have language about allowing shared kitchens, shared bathrooms, whatever is the right way to phrase it, right?
Right, right, yeah.
Angus?
Um. Yeah, now that you've clarified what you mean by what you're thinking with social dormitories, I, I, I was gonna suggest cutting that, but that, that makes sense to me. So nevermind.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if that's the right phrase, because I think that means other things currently, but maybe there's some other word to use that won't be bullying.
I think the only, uh, oh, go ahead, Nate.
Yeah, it's interesting, you know, we, right now, the really difference between mixed-use buildings and apartments is say that this non-residential component, but I just made a note to myself, um, you know, in the overlay, would we define, could we allow apartments to have some almost mixed-use space, but still say it's an apartment building?
Yeah, I, I think if we do that, that's, because that's really what we're imagining, I think, right? It's like, maybe there's a laundromat or a convenience store, or I don't know what else, but smaller scale commercial.
Right.
Things.
Yeah. Sorry, Angus, you were, you were gonna say something.
Well, just, uh, two, two points, which is, um, I mean, I guess we could also then have a, a, uh, raise the cap on the number of units for this overlay, right? Okay, um, and then, uh, I guess the only other thing I was thinking is that, you know, focusing on commercial space does start to get us, um, part of, part of the way we're proposing this is that we're not fundamentally changing what this plot of land is primarily doing for the town, right? And the more we get into allowing commercial space, the more we are changing what this plot of land is, is doing for the town, right? Which isn't necessarily bad, but I think, you know, uh, when we're thinking about changes to traffic, changes to streets, you know, streetscape, things start to maybe, um, might sound to people in North Amherst like bigger changes than what we're kind of saying in our general purpose as what we're trying to do.
So maybe it could be phrased as, uh, commercial amenities for the resident, for the student renters or something, to make it clear that we're talking about services that would largely predominantly just serve people living there, not
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what the wording is, but with that, I get that message across, that it's not, you don't imagine, oh, here's a new restaurant that, you know, is gonna bring in traffic, is really what you're saying. I think it would be different.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I've kind of, you know, question, you know, do we not want to allow any of it? And then just say, let's get, you know, if there's enough people there, create connections to the North Amherst where there are restaurants and to the Mill District. And so we're then bolstering that area rather than having, you know, even if we, if this were in place, right, and it's a, say, um, for instance, say Puffton took advantage of this, if this were in place and doubled the density, and they said, oh, we're gonna create, you know, we want to have a safer, it's just crazy, like a Chipotle in another restaurant. And then although we say it's for residents only, I'm not sure how we monitor that. And then like that, right, to Angus's point, the traffic and the whole kind of purpose is somewhat different. And so I, I haven't quite resolved it, but yeah.
Can we limit the types of establishments? Like, uh, we, no, no food service, no, I mean, I don't know what the, what the classifications are even, but is that something we can do, or is that get to?
No, we, we, we can, we can. It just, you know, it could be that they only serve prepared foods as opposed to a restaurant. I just, you know, I don't know if that gets, you know, we, we could, we could narrowly define what we think are appropriate kind of services or amenities. We could.
Um, or can you build it in so that, oh no, then we're back to the special term, permit idea, um, something we could actually deny. Could that slice be somehow need approval? The, whatever your, whatever your non-residential pieces are, need a kind of, some kind of approval.
I would rather than just not even ask for it and just make it
Sure.
apartments, because I, again, that's a special permit that's discretionary, and I think that would be enough of a, if we're allowing apartments, then, and they don't need to do it, they probably wouldn't just because of that discretion. And maybe they would, but they're, they would always have designed it in a way that, you know, I don't know how far they'd go with it. Um, all right.
I'm thinking, you know, part of what I'm thinking is like Fieldstone, for example.
Right.
You know, they have, I know it's a totally different arrangement, but, but this, what's there is really attractive. As a place to live, meaning their apartments, there's a cafe, there's a small gym, like that's what students want to live with, right? So like, if we could accomplish that kind of thing, I think that's great. But I don't know, that just opens it up to too much other stuff.
No, I mean, it's interesting that you, they could say that that's really only for the residents. And I, I think you could at this, you know, then it's like, you know, is it, how is it monitored, or how is that insured? But I, I think that they could say that, yeah.
Right, right. That would be up to the developers to show us their management plan, right, about how that's work. Yeah, so I would almost take out mixed-use buildings. Uh, and if we're gonna try and build it in some other way.
Mm-hmm. All right. All right.
All right. Um, permitting process, yeah, I like your idea a lot about pre-meetings with multiple plans, kind of thing, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking, there's, I, I found a few examples. I was gonna look, look at them a little bit more about what communities require for these pre-application meetings and, um, you know, I think as an overlay, we can do that. And, you know, we could, um, we don't want them necessarily to spend too much time, but, you know, come in with, they could, we could say like two different ideas and show us, you know, five, five things, um, we'd like to see.
I think that makes sense.
And then, you know, site plan review is, you know, the conditions and requirements are what is, you know, then listed down here as general requirement. So there isn't any, anything special about the site plan review. You know, we have our existing criteria in the bylaw, and then we have the additional criteria laid out here in the, in the, what would be in the overlay.
Yeah. Um, inclusionary zoning, uh, I've gone back and forth on this myself. Love to hear others where you're at, what you're thinking. Um, if there's a way to separate them, I like that idea a lot. As Bruce has brought up often, this is almost build a, a new village, right? That has other maybe downsides. The other thing on my mind, if we're gonna allow the non-full units, do we want that type of building to still require inclusionary zoning? Like, is that, is that everything that would be used? I would guess that's not an attractive scenario.
Yeah, I don't think we'd apply it to social dormitories, dormitories.
Or whatever we phrase that thing as.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would vote, I think, to keep it at twelve percent and not, not increase. Um, I mean, right now, none of those units have affordable units, correct?
Yeah, presidential expanded and they have six, but otherwise, right, none of those units are affordable, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if, if something happened from this, it would be a huge expansion in affordable units. At the same time, I think Kathy Shane, uh, shared this, and it, I think it, it seems right that the, like, for instance, if Puffton, if they tore that all down and built whole new units, those are gonna be a much higher rent. Um, I mean, they're gonna charge a higher rent than what Puffton is charging. So on the one hand, we'd be gaining a lot more affordable units. On the other hand, we'd also be losing some of the kind of, you know, um, middle or lower-priced units that, that are in town, so.
I meant to pull up the, try and pull up data on that. I, I was, I need to push back on that statement a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Maybe you're familiar also. And again, it's really anecdotal, just from like my daughter's boyfriend and some other friends, stuff like that. But it sounds like they're charging eight to nine hundred a bed. Which is, which is not cheaper.
No.
Um, so that's, and again, I wanted to try and get some actual data on that, but I've heard three cases where that's basically the price range. So there's no way cheaper than a lot of other places.
Yeah.
That's right in line with the single-family housing market pretty much around here. I mean, I'm lower than that, but like, that's generally, you know, eight hundred to a thousand dollars, I think, is what students expect to pay because of our current market. If not, and more for more space or less roommates or whatever.
Yeah, I'm looking at their website. It says like their three-bedroom townhouse, monthly rent is almost a little short of three thousand a month for three bedrooms, which depending on how many, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm saying a thousand a bedroom. And again, maybe they're not, maybe they're not following leases correctly. I don't know, like, these are I've known there were two people in a room and they're still paying that much, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, I mean, it might be that they're, you know, slightly lower than, say, the newer buildings, um, that are downtown or elsewhere in town, just, you know, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd say that they're then moderately priced, but they're probably
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's, that's still, I think, in the upper range of what you, what this experience going to single-family houses.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then if that's, i- in that case, I would even more strongly recommend that we keep it at twelve percent then, um.
Okay, yeah, I'm. All right, dimensional standards, um.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, so I was gonna jump in, you know, we have a setback from the roads, like three hundred feet, four hundred feet, and then that's where the density would increase. We have some, yeah, it's, you know, we came up with some setbacks from abutting residential properties. And then we have kind of like our setbacks from the property lines. You know, and, you know, what I could, what we, what we don't have is like distance between buildings or anything else. So it's really just like you have your kind of generic zoning building envelope. Here's your, you know, you have to be fifty feet from here, or how many feet from here, and then, you know, it's however you want to develop inside of that. And you know, the question is, do we like that, or do we want to have a little bit more control over some things?
Yeah, uh, I don't, I personally, I don't feel, have enough knowledge to really contribute much there. I'd lean to you, Nate, to, to tell us what, what you think.
I guess the only one would be, do we limit height?
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I still like that idea a lot, meaning allowing, having a different distance to allow increasing height, moving east to west. Although I appreciate what you said about keeping it simpler, maybe at first, Nate, you know, allowing first everywhere, whatever, but I think keeping that idea in here of the increasing height can share the vision with others a little more. I think that'll be a reasonable, uh, an acceptable layout in some ways. Like if we're saying, it's only three, what's allowed now? Two stories or three stories?
Um.
The street side?
It's three, some are three, some are two.
So to make the point, we're not changing what's allowed in the visible portion of these properties.
Right, X, we're limiting it, right? You know, three to four hundred feet from the road as only three stories.
Right, and then gets, potentially can get taller down the way, but the land changes, so it'll all look, you know, pretty level. So I would, I would want to keep it that way, I think.
All right. So for general requirements, we have building design. You know, again, we could have it be within the, along the street and then, um, you know, and then we don't have any design for in, interior of the site. Uh, it's really, you know, it can be flexible.
Maybe we, I don't recall the details of what we put in the university drive. Um, I know their facade had to have different sort of reliefs, right? Well, maybe we can just adopt something like that for now.
Yeah, I mean, I was even thinking, say, like three stories along the street, like, do we say that it has to be under, under a roof? And for instance, in, you know, do we care if on the interior of the site, it's like, uh, you know, six stories or five stories? Without any step back, or do we want, you know, upper floors to be stepped back at all? I mean, you know, we, yeah, on the university drive, we had a few things about the upper floor needed to be stepped back, some variation in architecture, whether it's like change in plane or some relief. You know, yeah, yeah, there was some generic kind of.
I would go with something like that, and I, I like the step back above three or four floors. Like, that's fine. Again, I'd look to you for suggestions.
And, you know, do we say that this applies just along the street, or does it, is it everywhere in the overlay?
I would think it's everywhere. That might give us more hmm, more palatable designs coming in to start, right, versus just big monolithic six, six-story buildings?
Yeah. All right. Yeah, and I think, you know, to me, this would be like, you know, we could talk about this once more with the planning board possibly next week. And then, you know, I, like we were talking about earlier, then do we just have this be, you know, some ideas that we present in a public meeting, because, you know, I think we have enough to have a few graphics, uh, explain kind of the concept and then see where, you know, what the concerns are. Um, you know, Bruce has done some diagrams, saying here's what this could yield in terms of possible density. So we have that. Uh, and it's really then, you know, as Jesse was saying, like, how do we, you know, let's listen and see what we do with it. you know, as Jesse was saying, like, how do we, you know, let's listen and see what we do with it, how we move forward or change it or.
Yeah, I mean, I think if this is a document that's we're gonna share around, we probably want to include a list of considerations that are on our radar. I mean, they're sort of nuanced in here, but emergency services, sewer, you know, recommendations from police about distancing, that, those kinds of things. If we're upfront that, yes, we know we should consider these things might be good. And I don't know if that, I don't, I don't know where we started. Somewhere we started like a bullet point list of these kinds of ideas. Was that on the more detailed version?
It wasn't, it wasn't the more detailed, yeah.
Maybe we want to add that in here if this is something that's gonna be shared.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think I would probably go through it and just come up with, you know, one or two documents that we could share for that meeting. You know, for site design here, you know, again, there's a few bullet points. There could be others. So if you have ideas, you can always, you know, talk about it, or we can, you can email me. Some of it would be, you know, then though, these are used by staff at the pre application meetings. Then again, it's used during the permitting review. And so, you know, is there something that we really want to consider?
Yeah.
And then, you know, there's, you know, but built into that is somewhat, sorry, as I say, we have open space amenities and pedestrian vehicle circulation. There can be other categories. I just tried to categorize kind of the bigger pieces. So.
Where, where's parking on here? Is that in amenities?
I had it under pedestrian circulation, but.
I missed that. I mean, I think this is gonna be really important and much talked about point, uh, will be my guess. And yeah, I'm all for what we have put in there, which, which is the one per unit. I don't, I think that's a great goal to get to.
Yeah, it's something that's different than we've done before. And I was having him, yeah.
I'll say now, and I'll say it again later, I'm sure in our presentation, that should be front and center.
I think we have talked about previously a requirement of multi use paths.
Yeah. Or, yeah, and connecting to the town. That's. And maybe you could also add in, you know, consideration of access to bus stops or whatever is appropriate for that.
Yep.
Bike, ample bike locks and or bike storage and scooter storage and all those.
Yes. Yeah, I'll call their kind of mobility devices. Or I want to say that, I'll say.
But you don't want to list one wheels and scooters as a thing that need to be accommodated?
You know, I, more and more.
Yeah.
I've seen, there's a, I gosh, it's a new school year. So last year, there was someone on university drive in spring semester, he had a mono wheel. And he had made look like shin supports, like he had modified it so he could kind of lean into it. But he'd take the multi use, he takes Swift Way. And I swear sometimes it looked like he was going 30 miles an hour. And then he, he was, you know, like, oh, my goodness, like, that's.
Really good. The newer thing I've noticed, this, the end of the spring last year and this fall are skateboards that must have a little electronic motor on them. And they have a remote in their pocket. So they're just standing there and they go really fast. I mean, they probably go 15 to 20. And you know, it's, it's very dangerous for a heavily walking pass.
Yeah, yeah, I am. At least this guy had a helmet and he seemed aware. And I think he actually had elbow pads and gloves, but.
I think I've seen him around. Yeah.
But this year, I just yesterday or one day this week, there was someone riding an e bike and they had big headphones on and they, I don't think they had, I, I think, I don't know if they were listening to music, but they obviously were not paying to tra, paying attention to traffic because they're just kind of weaving and going around and like, just, I'm like, man, I just, I don't know.
They're actually, yeah.
But I think that's a good point. And, you know, so anything else, I, you know, you know, for instance, like this would be, you know, this is a, you know, something, I guess, something we haven't done. And so, you know, this would be, if this were the case, you know, we, what we do in our bylaw now, we allow waivers. So we could say we want to waive it, or we don't, we say no. So, you know, this is the maximum and you can't propose more. And it really forces either creative solutions or, you know, knowing that there are students that they have parking elsewhere on campus.
Just occurred to me on the sort of combining amenities and the commercial space idea. I wonder if there's, you know, could we also present, and maybe it's just for the discussions, like, here's the types of things we imagine could be here. That, like, you know, like, just occurred to me, oh, a bike shop. A obviously, laundromats are attractive, just if we could come up with collectively a list of things that we think would be appropriate. Again, mostly to like, share our vision.
Right.
Nate, is there a space on here, maybe it was on the first page for like crowd management?
No.
I'm thinking of like for site design potentially.
Or, you know, sometimes we put this under property management. Let me just.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do. I think that's actually a good point. And maybe we call it something else, but for now to say property management, yeah.
Yeah. And that could be design features, like, and thinking about open space, but then, of course, how that site is actually managed. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I was actually thinking under site design for emergency response, right? Like, design, maybe make, I can clarify that. And I just want to, I just want to have your, get that there. Yep.
All right. I think we should, for time's sake, unless there's any critical right here, I think we should move on. Sort of what we said we would do in these meetings. And Nate, could you email around that more recent version of that? Actually, put time on my calendar to work on this. So that gives you some feedback or other suggestions before planning board next week.
Great.
And I'm guessing if you sent it around to all of us, Bruce might add some points. Of course, I guess, if you should as well. All right. Next on our agenda was townwide, identifying townwide areas for redevelopment. We'll happen to do that now with this group if we want, but that also I think would be useful in the full board anyway. Uh, and I'm not sure it's much different than what we did two years ago, Nate, where we, we had that big map. I don't know if they're new areas. I just feel like if we do that now, it's gonna be the same conversation again on Wednesday.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I'd emailed a list of possible zoning priorities, and I think some of it would be, you know, maybe if we look at that and say, okay, here's some ideas. You know, then where do, where would want to see that happen throughout town? It is at certain areas. You know, I was hoping that the, the CRC is still looking at the housing production plan. I think the goal is still to get, you know, the council to adopt it and then have the planning board and housing subcommittee or the planning board and maybe the CRC and housing trust to meet. It could be a combined meeting and talk about how do you, how do we then approach, you know, all the strategies in the plan? And so, you know, there's some zoning pieces, there may be some, you know, maybe the trust takes on some zoning, there's some other strategies in terms of whether it's financing or education. Maybe they pick up those. And so to try to, you know, divide the tasks. But I, I think, you know, some of it is Jesse, as you said, after Kathy commented at the last housing subcommittee meeting, it'd be nice to show everyone that there's other areas in town that, you know, staff and the planning board are considering. And so, I think we can get to the map at the planning board meeting, but I think some of these zoning priorities and apply, you know, elsewhere as well. And we can add to the list. I actually added one just a little bit ago. I had, I had senior housing, for instance.
You want to pull that up?
Yeah.
And clearly, Jared has other ideas that might fit really well into this also.
Yep.
Right. But it, can you explain that point A under new areas, evaluate for density on main corridors? Do you mean just like where there is density now or what the corridors can handle? What, what, what does that encompass?
Yeah, it's kind of what the corridors could handle. So you know, it's the idea, I mean, I mean, it's also trying to build on where there's already infrastructure, whether it's, you know, bus routes and water sewer and other things. But, um, you know, are there parts of, you know, to me, the North Pleasant Street would be, you know, is it, I don't want to say it's the gateway, but it could be the gateway or other parts of North Pleasant.
North Pleasant, East Pleasant, that's what that stands for?
Yeah, yes, yeah, sorry. And then College Street, Main Street. I mean, you know, there could be others. Uh, it's just, you know, there's, um, you know, we've talked about East Amherst, and I think there's something, that's something we still want to look at. And so that's, you know, say, from uh, could, you know, wherever we want to stop it, you know, could be from the railroad tracks by Hampshire lumber heading east to some point, whether it's all the way to like, you know, the Fort River Bridge or beyond to Rolling Green, is it, you know, do we break it up? Is there something that would be similar to what we're doing with the overlay North Amherst, so identifying areas that we think could be redeveloped with a higher density? It doesn't mean, you know, you know, and, and we could, and then I think part of the process is defining what do we mean by that density? You know, is it three stories? Is it, you know, I, I like a, I like a 40R district where it requires some affordability. And so, you know, there could be, you know, do we allow in some of these, do we promote more townhouse style development or, you know, so it's pretty open.
Okay. Maybe, maybe in a, if, if this is gonna be on the agenda for planning board, maybe it would be good to, if you could send around the full town map with some of these already defined areas outlined just as a starting point for us to look at. With, you know, with the names of what we're calling them, at least in practice. So, so that we can think, oh, what else could we include or where are there spots? It got me really useful, at least for me to think about that.
Yeah, and I was trying to, I just couldn't generate one fast enough for this meeting.
Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, low hanging fruit, but I'd like to put it on here. And that is, I mentioned this at the planning board. We have got to fix the definition of owner occupied. Because it does not address trusts. And that is increasingly the way to go because of Medicare, Medicaid look back. And so, I mean, even, even the house that I'm in right now, uh, which is certainly owner occupied for all intents and purposes is not owner occupied under the literal text of the definition. Because the, the house is now owned by a trust of which my wife and I are the beneficiaries. So, uh, it's, it's, it's low hanging fruit and it's simple to fix, but, but we need to get it done.
Yeah, and it, yeah, so I, you know, I, you know, we can build on this list, and I think we could talk about it, you know. There has been zoning subcommittees in the past. This is, you know, kind of a combination, but I think some of the questions would be, you know, what's the process for bringing forth zoning amendments? And so, you know, for instance, the definition of owner occupancy, Fred, it could be that, you know, you email me and I work with the building commissioner and staff can work on it. And then the, how this committee can work on uh, something that, you know, isn't handled administratively. Uh, you know, for instance, there's a, we're developing a temporary use bylaw. The town had a technical assistance grant a few years ago with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we're picking that up again. And and it's, you know, it's for, um, it's something we don't regulate very well right now. It's like, you know, events on the common or on private property, you know, some, you know, a farm wants to have a wedding. And, you know, say they want to make it a venue. And so we're trying to, you know, we, I know, value planning commission, uh, you know, research different bylaws around the state and came up with a template and we've modified it. And to me, that's something that, you know, if it moves forward, staff would present it to the planning board or this subcommittee. But I don't know if the subcommittee, you know, at this point, it doesn't need to work on it. But you know, within these priorities that are listed, most of these are things that might need research and, you know, a, a group. And maybe if there, you know, we could differentiate if there's like, you know, three or four, we think that our staff could work on too, you know, we can identify those as well. And so, you know, if there's, I don't, you know, we can call them low hanging fruit, or if we think they're a little more straightforward. You know, we can put them on here too. And then, you know, we can refine it and talk about it with staff and the planning board.
Sounds, sounds like a good approach. Is 40Y different from 40R?
There is. That's a 40Y is a starter home overlay. So 40R is, you know, right, it can be a property or district and it's, you know, smart growth, the idea is that has different density factors and requires percent be affordable. Uh, 40Y is a little different. It doesn't have the same density requirements. It's really meant to help with smaller starter homes. We've been meeting with different stakeholders for certain properties and, you know, it's been mentioned and another planner and I've talked about it, and I think it's something that, you know, is there, for instance, municipal properties or some areas where we want to try it? And just, you know, and it, and it maybe, you know, as a subcommittee, we explore it, we, you know, we research in it, maybe it doesn't go anywhere, but at least we've, you know, we have some basis for whether or not it moves forward. And, you know, I don't know if anyone else has other ideas. And so, for instance, the sign bylaw, we have a whole section of our bylaw that's related to signs, uh, you know, downtown signs, any signs. And it doesn't really comply with uh, what the, you know, federal and state laws are. And so, you know, we are, we, the building commissioner manages it as, you know, as we can, but there's always some questions about it. And it comes up fairly often. And so South Hadley actually just, I think, is updating their sign by law and there's only by law to try to address all these. You know, the sign has to be, you know, you have to be neutral in terms of how you regulate the content. It's, you know, there's some other pieces, but you know, allowing multiple principal dwellings on a property is interesting in that the bylaw doesn't, previous staff has interpreted saying you can, more recently, it's no, uh, but the bylaw is somewhat inconsistent in how it describes this between different sections of it. So, you know, if we want to be intentional and say, we can allow two duplexes on a property or two single family homes on a property or some combination of that. You know, that's something to, to work on.
Yeah, sorry, can we back up for one second? Um, sort of related to the sign bylaw. This is something I thought a fair bit about a year ago or so, but I never reached a a how. And the comment or the, the issue I see is around the level of detail, at least that planning board spends on some things seems like not good use of what I envision planning board is. And I don't, I don't know why that falls in our bucket. I don't, I couldn't figure out where it's written, that that's what, and, and maybe it's not. And it's, it's really a question for you, Nate, but things like, you know, the, the scrutiny of the, when we're doing site plan review and the lighting plans and the walkways and the where the mini split goes and all that kind of stuff, which I think is important for someone to look at. But it always strikes me as misplaced for the planning board to be doing that. When I read the charter of the planning board. That's how it is, is how it is. But I don't know if that's ever really been intentionally decided, or, or if it's just morphed into that. And is this list the kind of thing where that could belong? To sort of figure out if that has a better home or if it should be planning board.
Yeah, no, I think, yes, I think, you know, there's criteria within the bylaw for site plan review, and then there's other standards and conditions. And yeah, let me just, I'll write that.
Like, it seems a lot of it to me could be staff reviewing, which would save a whole lot of time and, and, you know.
Yeah, or, you know, like we've done. So, yeah, so what, what's happened is, you know, right from almost any big product now, we have like 50 set, 50 standard conditions. And Bruce's, you know, has said at the last one, well, I don't want to see them. I just want to see what's new. But the difficulty is, you know, say, for instance, like the location of mini splits, and that's kind of a changing, you know, it's a, it's a changing dynamic because of the way, um, you know, the technology is fast changing. So, you know, at one point, it's like you get, you know, if you have a, a 80 unit building now, you might have 80 unit, 80 compressors outside. And that, and that can be, you know, if they put them all along the front, that could really disrupt the streetscape. And if they have them really visible on the roof, maybe that doesn't look so great. You know, I think we, we say in the bylaw that they have to be screened from view. And so, so then it becomes something that the planning board discusses. But you're right, staff can, we will say that to the applicant. You know, we try to address, you know, now if someone comes in, we'll say, you know, can you put this in a location that meets the bylaw? But then the, it's really up to the applicant to try to meet that. And then it becomes something done, done with the board. But I think it's a, I think it's a discussion we could have about how to address some of these standards and conditions.
All right. So you're saying in those scenarios, staff has already pointed that out to the applicant. And then they come to planning board and it has not been addressed?
And yeah, they might.
Talking about it?
Yeah, I mean, they might, you know, I think, right. And so, for instance, you know, they might say, well, I like to put all the units on the roof. And then we have to talk about what kind of screening they have. You know, um, or. You know, um, or they're going to have a bank of utility stuff on the side of a building that's pretty visible from. From the street and then, you know.
Really? I guess I'm wondering why is, is there a way that that can be handled? Sort of like, oh, we can't have a site plan review until you meet these standards. Is if they're, if their plans are not meeting.
Right.
Requirements. I guess that's what's missing to me a little bit in the process. And that's what results in spending hours on site plan review. Where a lot of the things seem pretty straightforward. That they need to have a solution, right? And then we, the planning board end up debating what that solution is, even though. I think it, it could be more straightforward, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, no, I, right. It's like if you, you know, it's right. Sometimes I feel like if the board, any board is given the time, right? Given the. They, they spend, they, they will, they'll fill it, right? So it's like when Amherst soccer came in to talk about the shed, it was the only thing on the agenda.
Great example.
And we spent, you know, forty five minutes discussing the style of a storage shed and could it be like a cellar story? Could it be a, this kind of roof with like cellar story windows? Could I do this? And. You know, I think it's a, it's, it's a difficult thing because there's so many variables to every project to say, well, we're not going to look at the lighting as long as it's downcast. But then. You know, we might want to look at the type of fixtures and, you know, how does it really illuminate the walkway safely? And so to me, that's where it is important for the board to look at. It's, it's hard to. To say yes to everything and have it be handled administratively, but I agree. I think, I think it's something to, I can talk with staff about. I think right now we have professional staff and I think we could go through and say, yeah, you know, there's. Right of these fifty standard conditions, do we make them pre-application requirements and try to. Try to focus what the planning board is reviewing for a site plan review. Yeah.
And I don't know if that's a widespread issue on other town committees also, like I haven't participated much in others, so I don't know, but.
It is, it is, it's a.
A larger conversation with staff about these things.
I, right now for the ZBA gets very detailed too. So it's, you know, it's, it's. You know, designer view board by their nature is, so it's.
Right. And again, I thi- I do think someone needs to be looking at it. I just feel like, given. Our collective expertise, it feels like staff is better suited to do most of it. Fred, please turn this.
Uh, yeah, I think that, uh. Uh, staff has a very large role here and. I mean, at the end of the day, the, the planning board. As the, as the public committee. Has the final word, but uh. Everything should go through and then if the applicant says to. Let's say the applicant has the position that, uh, well, we don't agree with staff and the way they're applying this particular condition. Well, all right, then that's something that the board should hear. But absent that, uh, yeah, that, that could be handled administratively. I agree with you, Jesse.
Yeah, I think, you know, just noticing on the list, right? We have this limited site plan review or administrative approval for protected uses. And so. You know, I think it was last year I realized, you know, we had reviewed the carriage, um. Barn and the Dickinson Museum, a, a group home. Uh, there's maybe one or two others. And so it was like four out of seven site plan reviews were for essentially protected uses. Oh, is that maybe the conversion of the hotel in Belcher Town Road? And. You know, we essentially you can't deny these and the limited, the site plan review has to be pretty limited. Um, because they're, you know, by, by state statute, they're protected, just like the new ADU is. And so. You know, some other communities have a limited site plan review or they actually will in their bylaw. Kind of enumerate, kind of like we were just talking about, kind of a set of conditions that if you meet them, if it, there's not a significant change. Then it, it goes to the plane where otherwise staff handles it. And so, you know, wh- what we could do is look at the last two or three years and say, okay, we've had. A few group homes and typically it's like fencing and parking and a few things. And for these uses, it's this and we could. Develop a set of standard criteria that becomes part of the zoning by law that we staff can. Can manage. And if it exceeds that or they don't meet that, then it gets kicked to site plan review, but we could try to. You know, right, produce the, what is actually going to a hearing? You know, I think the carriage uh barn may not have been able to be handled administratively. It was a new building, but you know, you're taking a. Um, say you're taking an existing structure and you're adding some lighting and some new doors. And you're restriping parking. You know. We send that to planning board for site plan interview now, but you know, so that's the Belcher Town Road piece. They converted, you know, the hotel into. Uh, you know, I don't, I forgot how many apartments, but there really weren't many site changes there. Um, that to me could have been a administrative approval if we had a mechanism for it.
Um, just to respect the time, uh, maybe we can shift gears a little bit. I have only five more minutes, so then I can have a bio break before my next meeting. But, uh, Angus, I wanted to give you opportunity to. Share if there were things on top of your mind. On the zoning front or, or anything else really that, that, you know, you wanted to add to this list or the separate list, we know, or whatever. So. Tell us what.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't have much to say apart from, um, you know, I, I, um, asked the, the, uh, planning team to, to. Present us with a, a list if they had time today. And so this is, it's awesome to see. Um, I, uh. The only thing, uh, Rob Mora had mentioned to me, that's an ominous list. Is possibly, uh, changing PRP, the PRP zone to allow housing. Um, apparently there's been some interest in, in at least one of the owners of a, the, uh, research parks. To, um. Maybe explore some housing. Um, I think the one down in South Amherst on Larkspur, um. Is one, one, one potential option. So that would similarly be a very, a pretty light lift, I think on the whole, um, and might help us to. Think about how to make the PRP, um, achieve some greater objectives than it's been able to so far. I, I like this, this list. I, I, apart from that, I have nothing to add. Um. And I think, I guess my, my question for, for you all and for, for you Jesse and Nate is, is this? Are we imagining that at the planning board meeting next week, we might do some ordering of like, what are our priorities? And. Simultaneously, like what, what are the? Top three or four things we want the staff to kind of be focusing on to bring to us as possible changes that they need to work on? Is that kind of what you're thinking for next steps?
Um, this the, yeah, first I'm seeing the list, so, uh. I, yes, I mean, that sounds logical to me to, to help prioritize. Uh, and then obviously I think. Staff would have to say. Yes, this makes sense. There's a logical order to some of this, like some of the things should be before.
Yeah. Right. Or maybe I should, I should rephrase the question. Would it make more sense for us as a subcommittee to, to come up with an order of priorities and then bring it to the planning board for full consideration?
Yeah, I think at the next planning board meeting, we, um, we could amend the agenda to, you know, we have it under general housing or under the housing subcommittee report. I think we could present this. And introduce it and then, um. You know, and just, you know, there could be other ideas too, you know, uh, from other board members. Then we, I think. I, yeah, I mean, it can happen either way. I, I think, you know, the subcommittee could, um, prioritize it and then bring it to the board and see how they want to. You know, if they want to pluck out two and then have, you know. Have them rearrange it or discuss what's the most immediate, um, so.
I'll make a suggestion there. Maybe we could bring this to planning board and, but only plan to spend. Ten minutes just to sort of share what the list is and ask for other things.
Yes.
And then maybe the next subcommittee will reserve more time for us to sort of rank, rank them more or less.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's interesting to me. The sign by law is, say, could be a heavy revision. Um, it might be rewriting a section of the bylaw. The allowing multiple dwellings on a property to me actually might be in terms of its actual language, pretty simple change. It's then figuring out, you know, what's the impact of that? Um, and so does it apply, you know, different zoning districts? Do we allow this or is it every zoning district? And so to me, the. You know, it's a, you know, if we're talking about with a planning board, it's like, what's the amount of research and time it takes? And then what's kind of the impact? And do they want to prioritize some? As, you know, do we work on a few that are longer range and a few that could be shorter, um, to get going? Yeah. I'm not sure that any of these, I don't want to say any are short. I feel like, you know.
Understood. All right, great, um. I don't see any public, so I don't think there's any public comment. Uh, and I have no unanticipated items. Anyone else have an unanticipated item?
No.
All right, fantastic. Nice to see you all and I'll see you on Wednesday.
Thanks so much.
Bye.
Bye.